Was able to enjoy some of this beautiful day. We're going to start out with our pledge leader and let me just say a few words about our pledge leader. Falcon Green, a second grader from Grafton-Bethel Elementary, will lead the board in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Let me share a little about Falcon. Falcon is a second grade student at Grafton-Bethel Elementary School and the son of Tevin and Shai Green. Falcon is an asset to his school and especially his second grade class. He is a hardworking and conscientious student who is always ready to provide a helping hand to his classmates and his teacher. Falcon has readily assisted in projects associated in school and at PTA events alongside his parents. Falcon displays enormous respect for the American flag while reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and the Star-Spangled Banner during the school's morning show. He displays an interest in historical events and people. He is a great example of patriotism to his entire class. Falcon is a model citizen and very respectful as a young man. Falcon, would you lead us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Falcon. Good job. All right. Okay, at this time, we're going to go into our recognitions and awards. And first this evening, we're going to start with our seniors of the month. And we're going to start down here at Bruton High School. And Mrs. Haywood?
Thank you, Dr. George. I have the honor of introducing to you the senior of the month for March from Bruton High School, Kelsey Monica Sluss. If you're here, please stand. Did I say that name correctly?
Yeah.
Now, Mom and Dad are with you, Frank and Nancy Sluss, Sister Stephanie and Will Johnson. Is everybody here? Everybody stand up. Stand up. And let me share some information with you about Kelsey. Bruton High School is proud to honor Kelsey Sluss as the senior of the month for March. Kelsey is a torchbearer and an inspiration to her fellow athletes. She is athletic competitor who lives intently by making a significant impact on all that she seeks to accomplish. She has participated in varsity softball since the ninth grade and has been recognized as the Daily Press Athlete of the Week for basketball. She is an all-around forerunner, both with her academics as well as with athletics. Kelsey is a member of the Chemistry Honor Society and the National Honor Society. She has demonstrated leadership in the Key Club and has volunteered at several elementary schools and at the rehab center at Centera-Williamsburg. Kelsey hopes to major in kinesiology and become an occupational therapist. Kelsey has served her school community well while maintaining a 3.90 GPA and has received high honors during each year of high school. Please join me in congratulating Kelsey as the senior month from Bruton High School.
Thank you, Dr. George. It's a real privilege and honor to be able to introduce Grafton High School's senior of the month. That'd be Taylor Bat. And would you please stand? And all of your family. Are they with you? Parents?
Yes.
Okay. They'll stand. Brothers and sisters, aunts and aunts. Let me read a little bit about Taylor. It is with great pleasure that Grafton High School has chosen Taylor Bat as its senior of the month for March 2016. Taylor is a member of the Math Honor Society, Vice President, Spanish Honor Society, and National Honor Society. Additionally, Taylor has earned highest honors at Grafton for all four years and has been recognized as recipient of the 2015 West Point Leadership Award. Knowing the significance of helping others, Taylor has been an active member of his community where he volunteers at Freemason Street Baptist Church, received the 2015 YCSD Student Service Award, and has earned the honor of Eagle Scout. In addition to his high academic and ethical standards, Taylor has always been a member of the varsity football, basketball, and baseball teams and was awarded All-Conference All-Purpose Defense Football Player 2014. Grafton High School is honored to recognize Taylor Bat as its March Senior of the Month. With all of his undertakings, Taylor manages to uphold a 4.42 GPA and plans to attend VMI next fall in major and international studies. Please join me in congratulating Taylor.
This time, it's my privilege to introduce the TAB High School Senior of the Month, Nicholas Hunter. And I believe your mom Lisa's there, and if your dad would be here, he would be. I know that. Nick Hunter is that increasingly rare individual who has participated in three different sports during his entire school career: football, basketball, and baseball. By the time he graduates, Nick will have earned 10 varsity letters. He has been named All-Conference in football and baseball. Nick is an outstanding leader who inspires his teammates by doing anything he needs to do to make his team successful. He is a role model for effort and fair play. Nick is a true student athlete who has maintained a GPA of 3.7 while completing a rigorous college prep academic load. He is also active in a number of organizations, including National Honor Society, Beta Club, DECA, and Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He has volunteered often through several York County community service outlets. Nick has served as an exemplary representative of TAB High School at the varsity level for four years. He plays with energy and honor. He treats his coaches, teammates, and opponents with respect. He is an outstanding young man. We are honored to present Nicholas Hunter as TAB High School's March Senior of the Month. Nicholas, you make us proud, as well as your mom. Thank you. And Mr. Medford?
Thank you, Dr. George. It's my pleasure to introduce the senior of the month for York High School for March as Hannah Stratton. And her mom, Kim, and Joey are here. If you can stand too. And brothers and sisters, I see y'all sitting over there. Y'all stand up also. York High School is pleased to announce the selection of Hannah Stratton as the March Senior of the Month. Three words that would describe Hannah is ambitious, caring, and determined. Hannah is passionate about her academics and put a tremendous amount of thought into her classes she selects each year. Hannah has maintained a 4.38 grade point average throughout high school, and she has taken a challenging course load each year. Hannah is part of the honors program, which is one of the most rigorous programs in the York County School Division. Hannah is a member of the Student Council Association. She is the captain of the varsity sideline and competition cheerleading teams, a member of the YHS Choir, secretary of the York County Youth Commission, and member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and still finds time to have dinner. I added that part. As a member of the Student Council Association, Hannah has made a positive impact on her school community. She informs the students of upcoming events and promotes school spirit through the year in writing and producing the toilet times. Hannah is a good citizen both inside and outside of school. She loves children, has given numerous hours of her time volunteering at the elementary school level. Last school year, Hannah worked with the fourth grade student that had a learning disability on a weekly basis. With her guidance, the student was able to make honor roll for the first time. Hannah represents the spirit of York High every day with her giving nature that shows through in all that she does. York High School is proud of Hannah and her accomplishments, but proud of everyone in your family. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mrs. Haywood, I'm going to ask you if you'll take care of the student service awards as well as community volunteer as well. Dr. Shander and I go down the front. Thank you.
We have two student service award recipients this evening. The first is from Grafton-Bethel Elementary School. If the student will come forward and the principal from Grafton-Bethel. Mr. Mentor?
Yes, ma'am.
Do the honors, please.
Okay. Grafton-Bethel Elementary School is proud to announce that Athena Curry, a fifth grader, has been chosen for the student service award. Let me read a little bit about it. Athena Curry is an excellent student, has been on the All-A Honor Roll every quarter. She is courteous and polite to teachers and fellow students and will go out of her way to help anyone who needs assistance. When doing a task, Athena always gives 110% effort in order to turn in her very best work. Athena absolutely strives for excellence and is a bit of a perfectionist, no matter what the assignment is. She uses her artistic abilities, neat handwriting, and her work ethic to turn in nothing but quality. In class, Athena seeks opportunities for an academic challenge each and every day. Athena also has the job of checking students' trivia answers each afternoon to determine which students were able to solve the question. She takes this responsibility very seriously and has always done a great job. She makes new friends quickly and even sought out peers that seem to need a good friend. One of such friends happened to be a new, extremely shy student who did not speak English. Athena took the student under her wing and had a special way of bringing the non-English-speaking student out of her shell. The transformation was amazing. The student's success is mainly due to her special friend, Athena Curry. In addition to her classroom excellence and kindness, Athena also serves as a member of the Grafton-Bethel Lego Team where she spent continuous hours helping the team find success in the competition. She is also a member of the Grafton-Bethel Elementary School Morning Show Crew where she is instrumental in leading the newscasters to a successful daily broadcast. She just jumps right in and knows exactly how to get the job done each morning. Students like Athena Curry are one in a million and such a pleasure to teach. We're proud of having Athena represent Grafton-Bethel Elementary School as our Grizzly community with the student service award. Please join me in congratulating her.
Again, congratulations to Athena and to Principal Lisa Ruffier. Our next student service award recipient is from Bruton High School, Tori McCurdy. And if she will come forward with Principal Mrs. Arlethea Dockery. Tori McCurdy is a senior who volunteers both in her community and also at Bruton High School. Tori is always excited to share anecdotes about her volunteer experiences at her church where she works with preschool and elementary-age children. With each academic year in Tori's high school career, she has increased the number of volunteer clubs and activities in which she has participated. During her junior year, Tori became involved with the Key Club, a service organization, and provided support for various projects in the community from food drives to selling tickets at sporting events. She has always been an active member of several honor societies, clubs, and athletic teams. This year, Tori has worked with the SCA to plan activities that are reflective and also of service to the community. In November, Tori, along with the SCA, planned a Bruton Gives Thanks campaign in which they collected, organized, and arranged the responses for what each Bruton student was thankful. She has also coordinated several blood drives and has worked to increase student participation in this community event. Additionally, Tori volunteers at Riverside Outpatient, physical occupational and speech therapy through career mentorship. Please join me in congratulating Tori as a student service award recipient. We now move to our community volunteers of the month. Excuse me. The first is Grafton-Bethel Elementary. Mr. Mentor, that's you again, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Haywood. It's a real pleasure I get to introduce to Grafton Elementary School Tara Kraup Kramer and her principal Lisa Ruffier. If you'd come forward. Read a little bit about Tara. Tara Kraup Kramer is determined, hardworking, and dedicated. She volunteers as chair of multiple positions and assists with all PTA Grizzly gathering events. Her passion for supporting Grafton-Bethel students shines every time she enters the building. Tara builds relationships with faculty and staff who know they can ask for her assistance with any project, big or small. Her focus on school programs and assistance for teachers results in greater opportunities for students. She is the parent of one child at Grafton-Bethel Elementary School, but her efforts impact all students. After several years as chair of the Grafton-Bethel main fundraising, which resulted in thousands of dollars donated, Tara stepped down. However, when she found out this summer at the first PTA board meeting that we will not have a chair, she stepped up again without question or complaint. When volunteering, Tara is very flexible, kind, and patient. Having these traits is vital when performing volunteer services. She not only found the new person to chair the membership position, but she mentored and assisted her with volunteering at the membership table during the recent membership drive. Grafton-Bethel Elementary School is extremely lucky to have such a dedicated volunteer. Tara Kraup Kramer helps us build a positive climate where others are encouraged to volunteer their time for students. She is humble and accepting appreciation for her efforts. Tara exemplifies what it means to be a volunteer for our Grizzly, great Grizzly community. Please join me in congratulating her on this award.
Our next volunteer of the month recipient is from Bruton High School, Mrs. Sue Milligan. If she will come forward with Mrs. Arlethea Dockery again, please. Miss Sue Milligan has been a band parent volunteer for the past three years. Additionally, she has served as the Bruton High School Band Treasurer. Sue creates individual monthly email updates for each band parent that includes their current band account as well as band and school events. She attends band rehearsal every Tuesday or Thursday night and also attends all band performances. Her care for every child has not gone unnoticed. Band members and parents consider her remarkable. In addition to all of her duties as treasurer, she organizes the spring trip and also procures uniforms for the band. Last December, she prepared and delivered dinner to her family in need. It is not uncommon for her to bring dinner or snacks for students who may not have eaten that day, listen and give advice to parents and students, as well as help with any job that needs to be done. Her infectious smile, parental advice, and careful attention to the needs of each band member will truly be missed. Mrs. Milligan is the proud parent of a graduating senior, and our program will truly miss her presence. Please join me in recognizing Sue Milligan as the volunteer of the month from Bruton High School. And Mrs. Kerski, you have Dare Elementary School.
That's right. It's my pleasure to announce the volunteer of the month from Dare Elementary School is Mrs. Michelle Ross. I would like to invite Mrs. Ross and Dare Elementary School Principal Lindsay Cacavalli to come to the stage. It is said that a person's true wealth is the good he or she does in the world. If this is true, Michelle Ross would be among the richest people at Dare Elementary School. Mrs. Ross's history with the PTA runs deep. Most recently, and for the past four years, she has served as Dare Elementary School PTA president. Mrs. Ross willingly gives her time to support the school and parent partnerships by leading fundraising efforts, planning and coordinating fun family events, and consistently supporting our teachers and students. Mrs. Ross is a wonderful leader. She and the PTA team have made it possible for teachers to apply for many grants and take an additional grade-level field trip each year. She is at every PTA event, making sure that things are running smoothly and everyone is having a good time. Each year, she hosts the Watchdog Program Kickoff, which puts dads in our school and classrooms. She is constantly seeking out more support to help build the Dare PTA to benefit our students. She is also an active YCSD substitute and can usually be found working in a Dare Elementary classroom. We are very thankful for Mrs. Ross and her dependability, dedication, and commitment to our students and families. She helps make Dare Elementary School the best school it can be. Thank you, Mrs. Ross, for your service. We truly appreciate you.
And we now have the York Foundation for Public Education presentation. Ms. Kerski?
Yes, I would like to invite York Foundation for Public Education Board Member Kathy Young to the front to present our students with a special gift from Cookie Text and Nothing Bunt Cakes. Falcon, Athena, and Tori, please come back to the stage along with our high school students of the months, Kelsey, Taylor, Nicholas, and Hannah. We want to congratulate Falcon Green from Grafton-Bethel Elementary School for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. And we want to recognize tonight's student service award recipients. Athena Curry from Grafton-Bethel, Tori McCurdy from Bruton High School. And congratulations to our students of the month. Kelsey Sluss from Bruton High, Taylor Bat from Grafton High, Nicholas Hunter from TAB High, Hannah Stratton from York High. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with its donor, Jeannie Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. And we have a new sponsor, Nothing Bunt Cakes. Congratulations, everyone. We are so very proud of you.
You are welcome, Dr. George.
All right. At this time, we're going to move into Accent on Academics and I turn to Dr. Shander to have him introduce us, please.
Thank you, Dr. George. Board members, for this evening's Accent on Academics, Bruton High School English teacher, Ms. Blankey Ballador, and her students collaborated on a film festival project sponsored by the College of William &amp; Mary, Global Film Festival, and Kenan Virginia Incorporated. Students created Do It Yourself and Film It Yourself, short film projects that fostered creativity and civic responsibility. Each film made curriculum connections through script writing, technical editing, and communication among global audiences. To share more about this presentation and introduce the students and other presenters, I'm going to ask Ms. Arlethea Dockery, principal from Bruton High School, to please come to the podium.
Good evening. It is our pleasure to present our Accent on Academics to you all this evening. We are eager to present this opportunity because it highlights an example of how our students pursued an interest that they had while in high school and how this has opened the possibilities for endless opportunities for them in their future. I invite Ms. Ballador at this time.
Let me go ahead and get started. You're a little bit nervous. Okay, good evening. I'm so excited to share with you the work of our graduates in the area of film production. We have offered a film class at Bruton since the beginning of the 2008-2009 year to our juniors and mostly senior classes. Like all good movies, you have to begin with a story. Ryan, who graduated in 2009, was enrolled in our first film class at Bruton. During that year, he and his fellow students studied, analyzed, and created various films. We showcased their films through English classes where students voted for their favorite films in a variety of categories. You can say that was our first competition. Fast forward three years, or in this case, cinematic montage, and Ryan comes to me with a proposal. The College of William &amp; Mary, where he was enrolled at the time, was looking into expanding their film festival to include K through 12 students, and he wanted to know if I'd be interested in participating. Oh, of course I was, and I said yes. It was the first time students in my class created films for the film festival. As part of this PBL, students were required to translate film festivals themes into a visual story while encompassing all five filmmaking components. Students were required to produce a treatment, a script, and a storyboard, or as we call it in the film industry, just a story. They had to create a mise en scene, or the art production, which is the look of the film, which includes lighting, framing, sets, makeup, and special effects, to name a few. Then they moved on to cinematography, or the use of the camera, where shots, angles, and camera movements. Editing, which is the longest and the most tedious of the components, is where the story comes together, and this is where they spend the majority of their time. And sound. They have to decide on what equipment to use, to do sound, not to do sound. And my favorite as a teacher is to make sure that I enforce the copyright laws and make sure they don't break any of the copyright rules. Now, this project is more than just having fun making a movie. Anyone who's ever created a short film or worked in the industry can attest to the various required skills. For example, collaboration. Making movies is a communal process. For this project, students created production teams with specific roles: the producer, the director, the writer, editor, and sound director. The roles were assigned by the team based on the students' areas of strength and expertise. Students had to have an understanding of their roles in order to avoid delays and cost increases. Students learned to work together to meet the required deadlines, and there were many. Communication. In this case, it is more than just text. It is cinematic language: shots, angles, editing, and sound to tell the story. Each film crew had to know not only the jargon, but how to put it all together to tell a cohesive story in relation to the film's theme. This required students to create a working outline or a treatment, a script, and a storyboard prior to the actual filming process. Students spent several weeks in the rewriting process, providing feedback and improvement and clarity. But even after filming was completed, additional feedback was provided in the editing process. And critical thinking, which of course is every teacher's favorite part. Film makes critical thinking so easy because it happens all the time. Deciding how to shoot and edit a film requires thought and then rethought. What may look good on paper may not work once production begins. The list of how many times students had to come up with a new way of shooting a scene, working with special effects, or redoing sound is too long for me to recite tonight. But I can tell you this: film, students were constantly thinking and rethinking how to better shoot a scene through shots, angles, sound, and editing. So, without further ado, sit back and enjoy some clips from our award-winning films. So, without further ado, sit back and enjoy some clips from our award-winning films.
If you can dodge a wrench...
At this time, do we have any unfinished business from anybody aboard here? We do not. Seeing that, we're going to move into presentations. And our first presentation, and I guess our only presentation, is our construction report. And I'm going to ask Dr. Shandor to share some information on that.
Thank you, Dr. George. Board members, I'm going to ask Mr. Sheerhart if he'll come forward and present this month's construction update.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, good evening. And here's your Capitol Projects Report for the month of March. I had to focus on three projects this evening. The first project would be Wallamelle Elementary School, and this is the additions and renovation of that building. Here we have a drawing of the building. The white area is the existing building, and the areas in blue are the additions to that existing building. You've seen this slide before, but I just wanted to bring it up again for reminder about where we're working. When I talk about the building, you can see where we're working on the building. So, the area at the top of the slide in blue is what we're referring to as the classroom wing. The area on the right-hand side we're referring to is the gymnasium wing. It has a gymnasium there, and then in front of those at the bottom of the slide are the music and art rooms. And then you have in the middle at the bottom is the expansions of the main offices, the library, and then also the security vestibule there at the bottom of the screen. So this project, obviously, is started last year. It will continue throughout this year and will be completed in February of 2017. Now, I'm going to go back to that slide in just a second to talk about that. Well, actually, let's go and do it now. So if you actually drew a line down through, you see the 12 classrooms on the left-hand side of the screen, there's going to be a temporary partition right there coordinating or isolating those 12 rooms from the rest of the building. So this summer, when they're doing the renovation and the construction, they will have the classroom wing at the top of the building completed, the gymnasium wing there, and then the area from that partition to the left, to the right of the screen up to the gymnasium will all be completed. So we've told the contractor, we have got to have classrooms back, we've got to have cafeteria back, we've got to have offices back, so we can start school in September. And that's what the plan is. So the classroom wing is, the CMU walls are topped out. CMU stands for concrete masonry unit, which is basically a cinder block. And those walls have been topped out. You'll see that in the pictures coming up. And the steel joists have been installed, and the metal roof decking has been almost 100% installed on the classroom wing. And then on the gymnasium wing, the CMU walls are at full height for the classrooms in the front, and the CMUs are almost at full height for the gymnasium. You'll see those in the pictures here. So here is the classroom wing. It doesn't look very tall. It's got the, has the... It's got the, has the metal decking on it for the roof right now. This is actually about two foot taller than the existing building. They anticipate that the roofing materials will arrive either late, late in this week or the beginning of next week, so they can actually start installing the roof on this building. Now, this building looks awful bare. It doesn't have any of the, any of the brick on it yet. And the plan is, as soon as they finish the gymnasium wing, building the walls in the gymnasium wing, then the masons will come back to this wing and go ahead and put the, put the brick on the outside of it. But we can go ahead and get the roof on it, and go ahead and start putting windows in it, and make it what they call watertight. And we can go ahead and start doing work inside the building. So, here's a picture inside the classroom wing. This is actually an area of three classrooms. There would actually be two walls in this area here to divide this up into three different classrooms. So, this is just an interior look. And then this is, picture is of the front of the, the gymnasium wing. These are the windows of the art and music classrooms. And you can see how high the scaffolding is behind there. So, that's where the, the, the walls of the gymnasium are up to about the height of the bottom of the scaffold there now, and they just need to build up the rest of the height there. I believe they'll, should be sometime the end of this week or the beginning of next week, depending on the weather, to see how high they get that up. So, once all the walls are up, they can go ahead and put the roof deck on, and then proceed to put the roofs on. So, then the second project I'd like to focus on is Bethel Manor Elementary School, 300-400 hall renovations. And this, we've received the design development drawings, the first set of drawings from the architect. They've been very busy since they received their contract, being a lot of site visits and a lot of work, a lot of discussions. We met with the principals, and also with some of the staff at Bethel Manor, discussing some of the casework options and other things like that in the classrooms, how the classrooms would be laid out. We have, we're replacing the HVAC in the classrooms, the lighting, the ceilings, the casework, obviously, I just mentioned, and the sinks in the windows. So, they're going to, they will have a full, a full makeover, I guess you could say. We're also replacing the roof on this, on these two wings, and renovating, there's a set of large restrooms, boys' and girls' restrooms, on the 300 hall. Those will be completely renovated. And then we're also creating a security vestibule at the front of the building, which would be a second set of doors, much like we're doing at the other schools. So, since we have contractors in the building doing glass and everything, it's a perfect time to do that. So, then the last project I'll focus on is Yorktown Elementary School. And this summer, this project will also happen in the summer of 2017. I also have received a design development drawings for this school. This school is involved with replacing the HVAC and the roof on the main building, on the, on the existing building. And then also expanding the cafeteria, which I know the school and the school, staff and the students are really waiting for this. They will also, we will also be modifying the entrance and the main office area to enhance security. This includes rotating the offices, so they actually face to the main entrance, so they can see, they can monitor people coming in the front doors after they release the front door and let them in. It also involves a security vestibule also, so they have a second set of doors as well, just like we're doing at Bethel Manor. And we've done it, grafted Bethel and a couple of other places now. And that was my last slide for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Just one quick question on Wallamille, just to back up to that one. So, the new construction, at least the classroom portions, will be completed before they shut down and do the renovations to that hallway that you were talking about to the left?
It's going to be a simultaneous operation this summer. They're going to finish the additions, the new additions, and they're going to work on that half of the interior of the building, doing the renovations on that half of the interior. They'll probably be working on all the building, but they're focusing on that area that we absolutely need to have back.
That was my next question, was that you'll be able to take a pretty good look at where things are, in case there, let's say there were some delays before we get to that point where they get ready to shut down that side of the building. If you judged that and said, "We're behind too much here," or something, then what would happen? Then they would just delay doing, we would have to find some other solution?
Well, we've already had them ramp up their operations. They were not working on the weekends and things like that, and I asked them to ramp up their operations there, go ahead and start working. They worked this, they even worked on Saturday this last week, weekend. They did not work Sunday, not because it was Easter, but because it rained. So, they are, they are working as hard and fast as they can go, and they're working extended, extended days, too, to get the project done on time.
Okay. Yeah, the worst, worst nightmare would be not have anything ready.
They know.
Don't even think that.
I know. But I had to bring it up. Just had to bring it, not an option, exactly. So, thank you.
It's just exciting knowing that all these activities are going on, and what the schools will look like as, as they come to a conclusion, completion.
Thank you, Mr. Shearheart.
You're welcome.
At this time, we're going to move into our public participation. This evening, we're going to have two opportunities for the public to speak. The first is going to be a public participation in which we have three people signed up. After that, there will be a public forum on attendance zone adjustment. There is nobody signed up for that, however. We'll open that up for anybody that would like to speak. So, we're going to start this evening with our public participation. And first on the list is Mr. Walt Latham.
Good evening, Walt Latham. I live at 121 Two Turkey Run in Yorktown, but I'm here in my official capacity as a registrar for the county. And I wanted to thank you and the school staff for all that you did to help make the primary work on March 1st. You might have heard about the presidential primary season that we're in the middle in. It's been the attention of some news. And occupied some degree of attention of the national media, and we got a visitation of that on March the 1st. And I know I speak for the Electoral Board and the officers of election, and the voters in my office, when I say "thank you." But I wanted to amplify that by saying that what made it all possible, or why I'm thanking you, is I don't think that, I don't think that the average person in the county really knows how much goes into it, let alone what we do in our office, but what the schools do. And Dr. Shandor pulled us together before the primary and talked to us, and we worked on having solutions to make sure everyone was secure, which also led to some other issues of making sure that the kids had a place to eat lunch. There were schools where the staff made sure that the kids had bagged lunches and they ate in their classrooms. So, the teachers did that. And that was possible, or made, made to happen, so that the voters would be able to vote in their normal polling place. Greg Dolak, who, he's a very thin person, but he's worth his weight in gold times two, he ferried, he shuttled teachers at Wallamille because of the construction that's going on there. It's a polling place. And he shuttled people who were teaching there from the shopping center to, to the school, so that they wouldn't take up parking spaces from the voters. And these elections couldn't happen without a lot of people who, who don't have their name in the paper much, and it certainly wouldn't happen without the support of the school staff. And you have no idea how much I appreciate that, and how much the Electoral Board appreciates that. And I hope that the people of the county understand at some point, hopefully not through a problem that leads us to being in the newspaper, but I hope that they appreciate from hearing these words, how much, how proud they should be of the school staff. I was really impressed with that. And so were my board members who were with, with me when we went around looking at the schools. York County is a very special place, and we're doing something right here, and I really appreciate it. I just wanted to let you all know that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Carol Bauer. Can you top that, Carol?
Y'all are special. Good evening. My name is Carol Bauer. I reside at 314 Brooklyn. And I wanted to say, talk about two things. You know, it's the darnedest thing. Those things that are important, we need to schedule time for. So, on your consent calendar tonight, you're going to be talking about the calendar for next year, and also, there's a calendar for the year after that. So, while we thank you for taking that Wednesday, or scheduling the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off, that's good, because we have, have high absentees, right? The thing that's missing, the thing that should be scheduled, is that you ask your teachers to evaluate student achievement, and in fact, 40% of your teacher evaluation is based on student growth. And yet, you have zero time on the calendar to allow your teachers to look at student growth. It has been requested the last couple of calendar committees to have time in October for that. It was requested this time as well, and in fact, that calendar committee said it was under advisement. I'm not sure what that means, but I hope that when you look at next year's calendar, or perhaps it's not too late this year, in October, to have time for teachers to look at student growth, and to actually place time on the calendar for that. Now, the second thing that I wanted to talk about is, is a first reading, and I wanted to say thank you, because you did listen to the foreign exchange students who came up here and asked you not to charge tuition, which is great. We appreciate that. But it was interesting, because at the same breath that you're not going to charge tuition, or you're recommending not charging tuition, you're going to raise the score that a foreign exchange student must get to be able to be enrolled in our schools. So, I think you need to look at a couple of those things. Sure, we're not going to charge you tuition, but we're going to have a higher threshold. Is that really the message that you'd like to send? Just two things I'd just like you to think about, the calendar, and what's important, scheduling time, and then also your policy for foreign exchange students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathleen Howe.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Shandor. My name is Kathleen Howe, and I reside at 121 Lansway, Yorktown, Virginia. I am here to discuss the latest evidence supporting traditional school start times. Per the HuffPost, on March 7th, the executive director and co-founder of Start School Later Incorporated, Teri Zaporin Snyder, states that the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention recently joined with the American Pediatrics for calling to an end of my, of middle and high school start times prior to 8:30 a.m. Healthy professionals and educators have known for decades that starting school too early is unsafe, unhealthy, and unproductive. As a result, our adolescents are suffering from chronic sleep deprivation at unnecessary costs to their health. According to the CDC, 85% of U.S. middle and high school students start school too early to allow adolescents enough sleep on school nights. Hundreds of schools across the U.S. and beyond have made health and learning adult, of adolescents a priority, implementing a sleep-friendly schedule for all involved. Others never switch to the early school schedule to begin with. More and more successful high schools have a start time of 8:00 p.m. or later in the state of Virginia. Some of these include, but are not limited to, Magna Vista, Lake Braddock, Midlothian, Oakton, Jefferson Forest, Langley, Abilmarl, Loudoun Valley, Grassfield, Mountain View, George C. Marshall, South Lakes, West Potomac, W.T. Woodson, Turner Ashby, Warren County, Lee Davis, Liberty, Atlee, Great Bridge, Western Branch, Abilmarl, and Monticello, to name a few. As you can tell, I've done my research, and I know all of you were working hard to work with us on this. I want to thank you first and foremost. I see that you implemented the new sign-in forms out in the hall. I hope it helps you ladies. I know tonight wasn't a good showing, but that's probably because of the holiday. Let's say people will still continue to come. If not here, they're probably watching you at home. And I'd also like an update via my email, which I wrote on the sign-in sheet, as opposed to U.S. mail, so that we save more money, in terms of any updates we have concerning the bids for the RFP for this matter. I thank you for your continued support and for all you do. I know you listen to everyone who comes here to speak, and we thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public participation. Anybody wishing to speak that did not sign up to do so, you will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. This time, I'd like to turn to Dr. Shandor and ask him to share a few remarks concerning the attendance zones adjustment.
Thank you, Dr. George, and board members. This is the next step in receiving feedback from the community regarding adjusting the Yorktown Elementary and Seaford Elementary attendance zones. Dr. James and his team held a community forum on March 9th and heard from community members. As stated in the timeline shared at the March 21st, work session will hold a public hearing at our April 25th school board meeting, as well as seeking approval on May 23rd at that board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. I now open the public forum on attendance zone adjustment. Does anybody wish to speak? I now close that same meeting. Moving right along here, matters by board members. That's the one good thing about being chair. You can pick where you want to start. Paige, will you do the honors?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. George. A very brief tonight. I'm just really excited to let you know that the new horizon, especially, they're in. I was into a foundation meeting the other week, and had an opportunity to tour the building, and I've never seen so many happy people in one spot in all my life. And the old buildings out back, they had all the doors open, and trucks around them, and they were throwing everything into the trucks, getting it ready to tear it down, I think. But they're also getting excited about the Woodside Campus, too. We'll be going under some updates and renovations, and be some shifting to bring more programs up there. Hopefully, we'll accommodate the Williamsburg, James City County, and Gloucester students more to cut down on some of the long trips. The, I'd just like to give a special thank you to our bus drivers. There was a movie called Nightmare on Elm Street. Well, when you go on Route 17, it's Nightmare on Route 17. And I, I have been out there in the peak when they were out, and how they move and line up and keep it going, I don't know, but hats off to them. And I mean, they're just, how they stay on time, I don't know. But it's a marvelous job, I think. And I'm sure that works all the way back to dispatch, and they work as a team. So, hats off to everybody in transportation. Just wanted to say that this is a time of the year I enjoy quite a bit in the schools. The high schools will be presenting their spring productions. Grafton will be coming up real soon with Big Fish, and also, York High is going to have Footloose. And I didn't know about the Tab High School, but they had nine to five the other week. So, I'm sure that was good. I'm just sorry I missed that. But this is just a time of the year that, where you start to look out the window a little more, and be ready for spring. So, with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
I don't have too much. I just want to, spring, yes, it's, it can't get here fast enough. Lots of things going on. I just want to kind of tell everybody just to, you know, wish them a happy spring break. It's not quite here yet, but it's coming around the corner. So, it's a week of just hit the reset button and get ready to buckle down for the remaining part of our school year. And just one last thing, on April the 23rd, our Sister Cities, Yorktown, will be holding their French market in, in historic Yorktown, around the waterfront, from 10 to 3. And we have an exchange program with some students in our schools, and the students from, from France that come over. So, and the, also the delegations that exchange. So, anybody who wants to mark their calendar for April the 23rd, it kind of kicks off things in Yorktown with, like I said, that French market. And that's really all I have. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. I have just a few things, and I'll be quick. Dr. Shandor and I attended the Heretta meeting at WHRO recently, and received an update on the General Assembly. And one aspect that I wanted to point out that they updated us on was, in these times of cut budgets, they've actually called for an increase in funding for E-Media Virginia, which is an incredible program that WHRO offers, the school divisions that, that own public education, own the public television station, which has a unique partnership with the school divisions. And I hope that we're taking advantage of E-Media Virginia. It offers just an enormous academic program that teachers can use in the classroom to help students learn, as well as for assessments. The funding that they have increased, I can't remember the amount. I should have written that down, but I can't remember the amount. But they did increase the funding for it for a two-year period, which I think is an, an incredible investment, which shows the General Assembly definitely supports E-Media Virginia. Also, the Williamsburg, James City County Superintendent, Dr. Steve Constantino, who is the leading national expert in family engagement, is offering a free professional development seminar for folks from the surrounding divisions. And I'm pleased to note that several York County administrators will be attending that free seminar. I've attended a couple of his seminars through the VSBA and read his books, and I think they will find it very informative and... they will find it very informative and get quite a lot out of it that they can share with the principals and teachers in the schools. And also, mark your calendar, if you like to play golf, June 22nd, the York Foundation for Public Education is holding its 11th annual golf tournament at the Kiskiak Golf Club in Williamsburg. I hope I pronounced that right.
You did.
Did I? Okay. Citizens who watch our school board meetings may know the York Foundation presents certificates and cookie texts, cookies, to our student award winners, but the York Foundation does so much more. It offers grants to our teachers to enrich the curriculum, as well as providing grants to further staff and teacher education. So if you would like to play golf, you can check out the YorkCountySchools.org website there on the screen, and the telephone number is 898-0451, and find out how you can sign up and support the York Foundation for Public Education. And I wish everyone a fun and very safe spring break.
Thank you.
When you're close to the end, everything, a lot has been said. I'm going to come from a different direction. A lot has been said so far about budget, whether it's the operating budget or the CIP. And I encourage every citizen, every parent, every employee to follow the budget session. And when I say that, I don't want you to be first day of school and ask questions. And that comes to mind because about two years ago, we had some parents to say, if I had only known, they weren't following the budget session, and they, first day of school, they noticed some changes. I'm not saying that we're going to make any changes, but it's just good to know what's going on in the budget, so that you're apprised of the funds that we receive and how those funds will be spent. Again, it's just something good to know as we continue this process. I want to join Mrs. Kersky in saying, have a wonderful spring break. Be healthy, be safe, be blessed.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. I'll piggyback on the wishing you well for spring break. It's much deserved, parents and students alike. Enjoy it. When you get one in college and one in high school, it doesn't work anymore, so enjoy it while you can here. Just a couple of things, maybe I'll piggyback on your comment about the budget. I was able to meet with Mr. Jeff Wassmer, the chairman of the Board of Supervisors this week. We're trying to touch base as much as we can and keep the lines of communication open, and I appreciate very much his time and will always continue to do that, so I wanted you to know that. A couple of things that I thought were a great time I was able to do, one is the animal awareness at TAB Middle School. I don't know if anybody was able to go to that, but they pick everything from cats, dogs, horses, chickens, and they make a case for your awareness that you need to be aware of what's going on with that particular animal, whether it's cockfighting or slaughtering horses, or it was just, and it was amazing, they filled up the entire gym and the entire cafeteria with these. It was huge. I had no idea it was so huge, but very, very well done over at TAB Middle, so kudos to them, it was great. The music festival at York High School last week, 150 students from 10 schools participated, all these elementary kids, and it's just sort of angelic, really, if you think about it, all these young voices singing, it was beautiful. So I encourage you to try to make that next year, they do it once a year, I assume around the same time, so hats off to all those folks. And the last thing I just want to say is I want to announce that we have 52 days of school left. So hang in there. Spring is here, sort of, it was today, and we're getting towards the end. That's all I have, Dr. Shandor. All right, at this time, let's just turn over to financial matters. And Mr. Mentor, I believe you have the honors this evening.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. George. If I can turn your attention to the certificate for approval of claims, we had for the month of February, a total amount of $3,580,755.73. Should separate these pages, you know what? They're stuck together, Mark. There we go. Thank you. If I can turn your attention now to some significant expenditures for the month of February, if you're looking at the first sheet, there are two at the top, both of them are equal in payment, $24,274, and that's to Murray Macklet Hospital, that's for our athletic trainers, which I think we get a great value. We have students that are able to be cared for quickly and reduce our injuries quite a bit, so I'm real favorable of that program. If you come down just a little ways, you'll see an expenditure for $72,233.61. That's to York County for the SRO offices under the quarter two, and then you have another expense of $25,599.43, and that's to the county for our video services, and they are some, you know, the video services do quite a job for us, so good work on their part. Next one down, $164,212, that's to Kingsmore Supply, and that's for two 2017 '77 passenger buses, which will help reduce our deficit for replacements that we need. We move down about halfway down the page, there's a charge of $378,523.95, and that is to Monalta Business Machines. That's our one-year Citrix license that we have through the division to pay for that. And then we move down a little further, we have a charge of $16,968, and that's to Sunova Solutions, and that's for GPS systems for our buses and some other vehicles, which approximately outfits 150 units. And when you hear GPS, you think, do they need them to find their way around? That's not the idea at all. This is a safety feature. We can track our vehicles and know where they are, and it's something that I think was a good investment to have. Moving down the page, there's one item that is just kind of normal, but I wanted to point out one thing about it, there's a, about three-quarters way down, it's $84,715.9, that's to Sedexo, and that was a payment for December, but if you notice, there is a charge of $408.71 for food, and what we had is we had a freezer malfunction, and they lost some food that we had to replace. So we're lucky we didn't lose a lot more than that. Coming to page two, the significant expenditures, the second one down is $21,700, and it's to Starburst Construction, and that's for windows and roof repairs at Grafton High School and Grafton Middle School, which we've been sort of fighting for a long time, and hopefully this will improve the problems we've had with the roofs and the windows greatly. And then there's another charge, $47,672, to the Starburst Construction, and that's a partial roof at Grafton High and Grafton Middle. When I saw Starburst, I thought they made candy at first. Coming down to the, just a little ways, there's a charge for, there's three charges together here that go to Oyster Point Construction. The first one there is Walla Mill Elementary School additions and renovation, and the second one is Oyster Point Construction for Walla Mill Elementary for the addition and renovations, and the same for the other one, and all three of those come to $258,034.96. Our last one on that page I want to bring to your attention is for $49,878.85 to Motorola Solutions. That was for the NFPA model amplifier at TAB High School, and this was to, for a safety feature to help improve cellular communication in the 900 megahertz radio that we had so problems, so that's, you know, real good for safety. Next, moving to our financial, monthly financial report for the York County School Division. In taking and reviewing this, I find revenues and expenditure patterns, as of the end of February, are generally similar to the past years, are in line with the budget that we've, projections we have. One of the things is, if you go back up to the top on the revenue, you'll notice for the federal, we've received to date $14,723,497.95, and that is compared to last year, if you take a look, we had $11,115.76, I mean, $76.16. And this is basically due to a one-time payment from Impact Aid of $3,608,421.79. So they're coming in with some back payments that are catching us up, and if you take a look at the budget for other things, a little deeper, it really equates to about 4.3 million Impact Aid paybacks that occurred and other federal expenses that we have. Moving to the York County Food Service Monthly Financial Report, I'm happy to report, by the end of February, revenue was exceeding expenditures by $180,382.91. And in talking with Mr. Jarrett, we're very hopeful by the end of this school year that we will have a small surplus, which I can't remember the last time from Food Service, we've been fortunate enough to see that. If I can move you to the last part, this is our resolution, number 16-18, and this is for expenditures that exceed $50,000 that the board has to approve. Our very first one is item number 5397, is drainage improvement at Seaford Elementary School. If you have been to Seaford Elementary School, when there's been a lot of rain or wet, over on the left side of the building, there's an underground spring, and you'll see sidewalks and things flooded there with a lot of water. So this drain is put in to improve the, to try to dry that up and keep it better. Number two is, the second one down, 5418, is 870 graphing calculators for high schools. And what I found interesting here, that was like $1,456. These have not been replaced in 10 years. With these replacements, they will help out, improve SOL testing, and they also have a lot more functions than the old ones, so really glad we were able to update those. The second one down is 5419, which is the graphing calculators. That goes to middle school, the first one went to high schools. Item number 5421 is desktop computers, and that was for Grafton High School, Coventry Elementary, Mount Vernon, McGruder Elementary, Mount Vernon Elementary, TAB Elementary, TAB High, York Elementary, York High, and York Middle School. And what we're doing, we got a state grant, and we're replacing some of these computers in each of these schools, and the ones we'll be replacing are the ones that are having performance issues at this point, so hopefully that'll give us some better equipment to work with. Item number 5423 is wonder shades at York High School. They're replacing the shades on the first floor to enhance lighting filtration. Apparently, when they have presentations and stuff, the current shades don't filter enough light, they don't block enough light that you can see the presentations too well. Moving down to item number 5441, this is surplus, this right here is for literature and thought classroom books in middle school, and this will be supplemental material that will be used by students and teachers in the classroom. And of course, the last one, I can't resist this one, 5450, solid waste disposable and recyclable, and that's division-wide, that's all of our buildings. So that concludes the financial report that I recommend for approval.
Second.
Any questions?
No.
Ms. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Mentor and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve financial matters. Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Okay, on the consent calendar, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine items, I'm just going to briefly describe personnel actions, donations, approval of the annual plan for title, 60 federal funding, approval of revisions to the local plan for gifted education, approval of instructional materials, adoption for AP Euro history, AP US history, AP Spanish, approval of the 2016 additions and changes to the division reading list, approval of minutes from the work session February 8th, a special meeting and a regular meeting on February 22nd, and special meetings on February 26th and March 21st. All board members attended each meeting. Approval of resolution 16-15, a resolution for the 2016 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll, and lastly, approval of the 2016-2017 calendar. Are there any items that anybody wishes to pull from the agenda?
Yes, if we could pull E and F, please.
Pull E and F, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items A, B, C, D, G, H, and I.
Still moved?
Second?
Second.
Ms. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Mentor and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the consent calendar with the exception of E and F. Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. I'd like to have a motion to move item E on the consent calendar.
Move item E.
Second.
Discussion.
I had asked to have this, just for discussion, we had received some emails regarding the AP courses, and I had asked if Dr. Guy would just talk briefly, or just the process to say that what thought was entered in?
Sure.
As this came forward.
Thank you, Dr. Guy.
Thank you. Just to explain a little bit about the IMR, or Instructional Materials Review Process. This process typically begins in the fall. For SOL courses, we typically select books for review from the Virginia Department of Education approved list. They do not have a list for books outside of the SOL courses. For AP courses, we review recommendations from the College Board. We also solicit teacher input. Once the list is narrowed, the instructional coordinators contact the publishers, who send copies of student and teacher textbooks and ancillary materials for each school. Teachers had access to all samples for approximately four weeks. Each teacher completes the IMR rubric, and when I say each teacher, each teacher for that content area, completes the IMR rubric to assess each book on its alignment to the SOLs and/or YCSD curriculum, instructional approach, content quality, and several other factors. Each school submits an IRA, excuse me, an IMR summary rubric and summary form, rating the book that they like the best and the book that they like the least and the rationale behind that. This data is compiled by IT, and the selected materials are placed on display for review and feedback by parents and community members. And we typically send that information, it's typically posted on our division website, and it's shared via the tip sheet as well. And then, once that process is completed, we bring the books to you for approval.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Don't go too far.
Okay.
Ms. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mrs. Kersky to approve item E from the consent calendar. Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes. I'd like a motion to approve item F.
Move approval of the 2016 additions and changes to the division reading list.
Second.
Discussion.
And this was, again, we had received some correspondence from parents, and I think just wanted to speak to the process that we go by for suitability of the reading material for the different classes.
So again, the purpose of the YCSD biennial review of the division reading list is to assist teachers in selecting reading materials that can be used in their classrooms for instructional purposes. Teachers can recommend titles to add, remove, or reassign through the review process. Prior to submitting recommendations, teachers are asked to review the current list to avoid... Prior to submitting recommendations, teachers are asked to review the current list to avoid duplication. In addition to detailing the SOL connection and providing the basis for selecting in-class or summer lists, teachers must also address two additional criteria such as multicultural connections, high interests, literary awards, and grade appropriate. Teachers must also address potentially controversial topics. The biennial Book Review Committee meets in December to review recommendations. The revised list is shared with each school, and then the committee reconvenes in February to make final recommendations. And to your point with respect to parent input, typically that information is reviewed by the committee. In fact, one of the titles that was shared by a parent earlier this year was reassigned to a different grade level. It was moved from ninth grade to twelfth grade. Additionally, a couple of years ago, another example, a parent that shared a concern about a book that was on a summer list, that was taken to the committee and moved from summer to in-class reading, because that's what the parent had shared, that they didn't have complaints with the book per se, but they did not feel it was an appropriate summer read.
Dr. Guy, I know there was a bill in the General Assembly that would require school divisions to provide an alternative book if a parent complained about that perhaps the book was provocative or something that went against their religious beliefs or morals. I'm not sure. I heard the governor was going to veto it. I'm not sure what has happened. But what is our policy? Do we offer an alternative?
Yes, we already have that as part of our practice. If a te, if a parent has a concern with a book, we have another book that they can choose from.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Guy.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ford?
A motion is made by Mrs. Hayward and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the consent calendar item F. Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. This evening, we have five items under action. The first three are proclamations. I'm going to turn to Dr. Shandor to introduce that.
Thank you, Dr. George, board members. National Library Week is April eleventh through the fifteenth. And in recognition, recognition of our librarians and the tremendous work they do, we have one librarian in each of our nineteen schools. Just want to share a few highlights from the proclamation. School media specialists are trained professionals, helping students, teachers, and parents find and interpret the information they need to live, learn, and work in a challenging economy. And we certainly appreciate and value all the hard work and their dedication, the dedication that our school librarians do for us on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve proclamation for National Library Week?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Mentor and seconded by Mrs. Kerski to approve the proclamation. Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes. Dr. Shandor?
All right, our second one, we have, it's National Volunteer Week, April eleventh through the fifteenth. And we are certainly really fortunate to be in York County with the number of volunteers that we have come to our schools. In recognition of our many volunteers that assist in our schools, just want to share a few highlights again from the proclamation. Volunteers connect with students and teachers through many different activities and organizations. Volunteers in York County School Division log approximately a hundred and eight thousand hours of volunteer service each year, which is fantastic. Our, our volunteers are a vital partner in our success.
That's tremendous.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the proclamation for National Volunteer Week?
I move approval.
Second.
Ms. Ford, please.
A motion is made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mrs. Kerski to approve the proclamation. Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes.
And Dr. George, just to, there's no way you could put a value to a hundred and eight thousand plus hours.
It's amazing.
But you can imagine what that saves a school division, our size, and just the volunteers that do what they do.
And to piggyback on that, when we, just at our monthly meetings, we just barely touch the surface.
Absolutely.
In recognizing one person a month for all the volunteer hours that go into this division.
You know, it's sad to think there, there are other divisions, other communities where, you know, if you actually captured that number, it would be significantly less, and the kids suffer, you know, because of that. I mean, so we just are so thankful for all our volunteers and
Yes, we are.
everything that they do. Okay, one more proclamation, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Dr. George. In recognition of our many administrative professionals, Administrative Professionals Week is April twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. These folks, they assist in our schools and offices. Want to share just a few highlights again from the proclamation. Administration, Administrative Professionals are those who effectively utilize their interpersonal and communication skills, manage projects, and organize the office in a team-oriented work environment, and are key frontline public relations ambassadors for the school division, or as I call them, the directors of first impressions in all of our buildings. York County Schools Administrative Professionals maintain a high level of professional achievement and responsibility. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the proclamation for Administrative Professionals Week, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Mentor and seconded by Mrs. Hayward to approve the proclamation. Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Next, I have consideration of approval of minutes from a special meeting on March fourteenth, 2016. Mrs. Hayward and Mr. Medford were unable to be at the meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes from that March fourteenth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mrs. Kerski and seconded by Mr. Mentor to approve the minutes from the special meeting. Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Abstain.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Abstain.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Thank you. Dr. Shandor, I'm going to turn to you if you would introduce the last item.
As you know, board members, it's resolution sixteen nineteen, resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2017 operating budget and fiscal year 2016 expected budget. Just a few comments. As a reminder, the school board met Monday evening and discussed additional state revenue approved by the General Assembly above the governor's proposed funding level. For us, that meant two hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Of that total, a hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred has been allocated to mandated special ed costs, New Horizons Regional Education Center, and additional bus and two regular education pairs, as we discussed that evening. That left a hundred and twenty-six thousand and sixty-five dollars, which will be used to, as a reduction to the request for the county. This evening, the school board will be considering approving their recommended proposed budget for FY seventeen, which will then be transmitted to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration.
I need a motion to approve resolution sixteen dash one-nine.
I move approval.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
I think comments, as we continue moving forward with communication with our counterparts, I think the question is, is there a need for the chair? I don't know if you had discussions with the chair of the Board of Supervisors about another joint meeting or not, whether there's a need for that. I, I think that the, you know, as things progress along, we might want to have another joint meeting to bring some things to the table, as we know that we are most likely going to have to come back to our table to prioritize some difficult decisions to close the gap, if there is one. At the end of the day, basically dealing with budget. And another piece is the community, I think it was said, but the capital improvement program, that budget that has always been in the background and not out in front in past years, as long as I've been on the board. This is the first year we've seen that out front as much as it's been. And I think it's important to realize that, and for the community to realize that that document is in some cases just as critical, if not more, than the operating budget that we're going to have to go back and revisit. So revisiting two documents that drive YCSD forward or can cause a mishap or a problem along the way is going to be even more challenging for us as we continue. So I think people just need to stay tuned, but joint meeting, I mean, maybe have a discussion, see if that's something we want to do.
Yeah, absolutely. We've already had some, some discussions, preliminary discussions about that, so. Anybody else?
I, to piggyback on that, I think it would also be a good idea to ask them if they have any questions before we meet. They need information, additional information to perhaps ask us, and we'll have that ready for them at a joint meeting.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mrs. Hayward to approve resolution sixteen nine, dash nineteen. Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Okay, tonight, we have one, under policy, we have one item under discussion. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Dr. George. The review of Section K, School Community Relations of the York County School Board Member, School Board Manual, excuse me. Board members, if you'll note, the proposed revisions include mostly editorial changes, the addition of legal and cross-references, and the removal of references to former heading titles. And I was going to ask Ms. Conomo if she can comment on policy KBE and policy KNAJ.
On KBE, this is changes that goes to the internet policy that we have. And it's basically blending the language we have currently from the VSBA, our Virginia School Board Association manual, and our privacy statement we have. So we're blending those together to put it on the division website. The KNAJ is our relations with law enforcement authorities. And we're tracking the Virginia Code in that policy and changes to the code, but it's also changes that we've already made to track the code in our student conduct code. So we're making sure everything matches.
Thank you. And we have an item under first reading. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Dr. George. We had a discussion at the work session related to Section JEC of York County School Board Policy Manual. I'm going to ask Dr. James if he'll please come to the, to the podium just to discuss a few of those adjustments.
Thanks to Dr. Shandor. Dr. George, members of the board have for you this evening revision to policy JEC, as Dr. Shandor indicated, school admissions. And this particular change regards tuition for foreign exchange students. Under this change to the policy, tuition now will not be charged to J1 visa students. Additionally, a score of two-twenty-eight on the English language test for international students would be required for acceptance. For F1 visa students, of course, they would still be charged tuition in accordance with federal regulations. Any questions?
Dr. James, just one clarification question. We're going from a proficiency score two-twenty-two to two-twenty-eight, six points up. Our students that are presently here, how many would have met the new policy by the two-twenty-eight?
Right. All but one would have met the new requirement of two-twenty-eight of our current students, and that one student scored two-twenty-six.
All right, so we're, so the standards of these students coming to our division are within what we are looking for or what the policy would be looking for for students?
Right. When you look at the students we have this year, yes, sir, that's exactly correct.
I believe this is a fair compromise.
Yeah, I agree. I have no problem with the policy.
We're just thrilled to be able to bring you back and
Yes.
open up some opportunities again. Thank you, Dr. James.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, under second reading, we have one action items. I'm assuming there have been no changes?
There's correct, no changes.
Okay. Dr. Shandor?
Wonderful. This evening, for the reporter, the superintendent, I just have a few comments that I wanted to
We have to act on the, so I should, I'll move approval. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you had any comments on the
I did not.
On the second reading.
I did not.
So I move approval of Section L.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mrs. Hayward and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the second reading of policy Section L. Mrs. Kerski?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Dr. George?
Yes. Dr. Shandor, you may now give your reported summary.
Thank you, Dr. George, for that introduction. I appreciate it. We're still learning the non-verbal cues. Thank you, Dr. George, board members. I have a, want to mention a few events that I had the opportunity to participate in this past month. Just sort of piggyback on Dr. George's remarks about the elementary music festival. It was a wonderful display of musical talent by our elementary students. I was so impressed with his performance, the hard work of not only our students, but our music teachers at all of our elementary schools in preparing our students for that evening, as well as the conductor, Ms. Amelia Keller from TAB Elementary School. Thought she did a wonderful job, as well as our own Reggie Fox at the school board office, who accompanied the chorus. They were just, they were simply outstanding. Also, just want to share what a pleasure it is, one of the, the fun parts of being a superintendent is going and attending recognition events for our students. And the dare celebrations are a wonderful opportunity for not only myself but other members of our cabinet and executive team to participate in those activities, as well as the Apple Awards. And the Apple Awards are one part of our recognition program to celebrate our employees for going above and beyond their normal job duties. Also had the opportunity to attend the PTA award ceremony. I want to thank all of our PTA members who support the work of our schools. I also want to extend a congratulations to Laurel Garalt, who is our YCC, YCC PTA president on being selected Assistant Director of the Peninsula District PTA. And she does a wonderful job advocating for all of our schools. Also want to share, I'm excited to share that YCSD is hosting an EdCamp. And again, EdCamp is a type of conference that the topics are driven by the attendees at this specific conference. We have attendees from all over eastern Virginia, including teachers, administrators, superintendents that participate in this, this, this is a participant-driven professional learning experience that, that has been created by educators for educators. And we've adopted this as part of our Leadership Academy and other opportunities for our staff members here. Since 2010, there have been seven hundred of these conferences around the world in twenty-five countries. I want to recognize Dr. Karen Cagle, Principal of Grafton Middle School. She's worked tirelessly to organize this event. I'm really proud of, of her work to, for us to showcase and bring people together to talk about all the issues facing education. This event is at Grafton Middle School. It's going to be on April sixteenth from, from nine until three. And finally, like everyone else, I want to wish everyone a restful and safe spring break. It's a great opportunity for us to refresh ourselves for that last stretch run as we finish the school year. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board at this time? If not, meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.